I call to order the March 7, 2023 meeting of the Salina County Board of Commissioners, and I would like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Weiss?
Here. I'd ask for those that are able to stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, now move to the citizens' input portion of our meeting where citizens may comment on county government, limited to three minutes, and items pertaining to, not items that are pertaining to today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission?
Rosemary Ma, Salina, Kansas. I just wanted to give you an update on our water collection we did last week for the Palestine, Ohio. We collected $3,804 in donations, and we spent every bit of it on water. And Dylan's on Cloud Street and Sam's were nice enough to order in water every night so that we would make sure that we had enough water when we went and got pallets of water. We received 13 and a half pallets from just different businesses that came and brought and brought it out to the warehouse. And the first truck left yesterday sometime during the day. Jamie Bradley wasn't sure what time the driver was going to leave, but first truck went out yesterday, and we had 18 and a half pallets on that truck, which went by weight. And we collected enough for 15 pallets for a second truck. And Bradley Trucking was going to take a second truck in the near future. He was going to check with Palestine on when they want the second truck of water. So we want to thank all the businesses and the citizens of Salina and surrounding areas for their donations, and especially want to thank Bradley Trucking and Long MacArthur for helping us out, and the Salina area of O-Tech Diesel Students and Sacred Heart High Students came and helped us on Saturday. So we want to thank the citizens of Salina and Salina County for helping us pull this water drive off.
All right. Thank you to you and the brigade for undertaking this event. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. We'll talk about the consent agenda. Are there any items that the commissioners wish to pull out and talk about for a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull out number 11.
All right. And I would like to pull out number seven and number nine for a very brief question or two is about all. Anyone else? We'll start with number seven then, the tenant estoppel certificate and third lease amendment. Let me get to the right page here, page 23. This is the 1858 properties. And I guess my question is, at one point in time, 1858 is the new owner of the building that we leased from for community corrections. But back here, it's somewhere in here, it had Salina Building was still in there, I thought. Maybe that's another one.
My understanding is Salina Building is selling to another entity, and that's why we're being asked to do this. This was discussed previously. Mike Montoya came and talked to the commission about the fact that we would be bringing this in front of you at some point.
Somewhere in here is where I, so it says to 1858, but the landlord is actually Salina Building Company. When, that's who we're dealing with on this particular signature. Is that correct?
They're the current owner until they sell the property, yeah.
And that has not come to fruition yet then? Is that what you're telling me?
I'm assuming that's the case. I don't know what the closing date is. That's between those two entities.
Okay. Number nine, which is the-
We were still dealing with Salina Building as of Monday of this week, so.
Approval of annual Central Kansas PHEP signature page for the annual grant submission, and that is on page 31. I think I had a brief question regarding that. It has the address of 125 West Elm. Is this?
That's the address of the Health Department?
I thought they were on Eighth Street. Huh.
You would think that because they don't actually own the property that goes to Elm, but the address is 125 West Elm. Yep.
And PHEP?
Public Health Emergency Preparedness.
And we're approving a grant for $37,000, which we, okay. That answers my two little questions. Now, number 11 for Commissioner Hay.
Yeah, the disaster relief property abatement refund. Phil, I was just wondering, it said the refund was for 2021. I guess my question is for 148582, how come it's taken so long for that?
So after you asked me about this yesterday, Commissioner Hay, I did speak with the appraiser, and he said what happened was they came in last year to protest their taxes because the building had been destroyed, and he said, well, you realize you could claim that, there's a process for doing that, and the homeowner just apparently wasn't aware of that. So he gave them the forms, and then it took several months for them to actually return the forms to their office. So my understanding is they did not actually get this until January of this year.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Now, let's approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved. And second, we approve today's consent agenda. It is a lengthy one. There are 13 items on here. Approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, public forum agenda, county commission minutes for February 14th, county commission minutes for February 21st, county commission minutes for February 28th, approval of tenant estoppel certificate and third lease amendment. And where did second page go? Approval of Kansas State Salina Talk Group memorandum of understanding, approval of annual Central Kansas PHEP signature page for the annual grant submission, approval of my sidewalk renewal for opioid dashboard, disaster relief property tax abatement, KDOC Talk Group memory, here we go again, the understanding, appointment of Carl Ridden to the Gypsum Township trustee. So all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero. Action items. Item number one.
RFA 2023-46 Correction Officer Salaries with Roger Solden Sheriff and Marilyn Lemur Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Mary Lemon, and good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This request is because we are still continuing to access challenges in filling the critical corrections officer positions. The commission did task us with proposing a strategy to increase the starting wages for hiring corrections officers. Last week, we came before you and talked about some different options there, with one maintaining the current grades and starting corrections officers at step four, maintaining the current grades, starting corrections officers at step three, and revising the corrections officer one grade from a grade 15 to a grade 17, and starting at step two at $22.40 per hour. This would affect revising corrections officer two, three, corporal, and sergeant. Additionally, we had discussed adding a 75 cents an hour shift differential for jail and patrol employees, for anybody that starts their shift at 5:00 PM or later, and then extending the hiring incentive from one year to three years. This request is to consider option three for increasing the starting salary, and then we would also like you to consider adding the shift differential to provide some additional compensation for those that are assigned that overnight shift. Your alternatives is to approve the request, do not approve the request, delay a decision, and request additional information. Our recommendation is to implement option three, effective at the beginning of the next pay period, and then we would also like you to consider approving the request to implement the shift differential, effective at the beginning of the next pay period. The budget impact is approximately $270,000, $270,550 for the changes in the grades and the steps, and then it's, the shift differential is estimated to be about $60,840. Like anything to add?
Just that, this has been a struggle for us, and we're trying to get people in the door. And I just checked this morning just to see, pretty direct competition with us is Ellsworth Correctional Facility over in Ellsworth. They're $24.26 an hour, plus a shift differential pay currently is what they're hiring in at. So at least get us more competitive. I don't think for $2 an hour, people would drive to Ellsworth, but there's a considerable number of employees at the Ellsworth Correctional Facility that may consider us if we're competitive and not have to drive.
At step one, currently, the corrections officers, a new correction officer that starts, the pay would be what per hour?
$19.41.
$19.41? So this is a $2.99 increase. I know the last time we talked about perhaps equalizing pay for all lieutenants, captains, et cetera, across the board, regardless of which department they were in, you know, whether they were a patrol or CO or whatever. I don't see that in here anywhere.
That's currently in place. They are equal across those two divisions, both lieutenant and captains.
Open it up to Commissioners.
Briefly, in the last statement, you're, there won't be any pay increases for the patrol side in this?
Correct. The focus was on corrections officer, but we did want to consider the shift differential and thought that would be fair to do it on both sides.
Okay. On your additional recommendations, I would just say that the shift differential is common within the marketplace out there, and I see where it might persuade someone who maybe wants to work evenings for, whether it's childcare or whatever, but there should be some type of differential there. On number two, you're not, you're not proposing that at this time? The extend the 1,500 hiring incentive?
No, I think our direction last week was to focus on the pay. I mean, we would certainly invite the Commissioners to consider, but we really wanted to focus on the hourly rate of pay.
All right. Thank you.
I want to focus here for a second on the budget impact. The $270,550, that is, I assume that that number is equal to if you were fully staffed?
That's the difference between what we would, if we don't do anything versus if we implement this change, if we were fully staffed the whole year, that's the difference that it would be.
The $270,000 would be for if we were fully staffed?
Yeah.
So it's really only going to be a portion of that right now?
We're two months in, and we're $100,000 under so far this year what was budgeted for salaries, so more than a third of this is already in my budget.
My second part of that question is then, assuming that it was there, where's the money coming from? Where would the money come from if we were fully staffed? And we needed this $270,000. Where do we get it? What's our plan?
I think if we were fully staffed, we wouldn't be coming before you with this request. This is just trying to fill, because we have so many vacancies, is trying to fill it, so. And this is within the sheriff's office budget excess right now, so it isn't where we would have to look elsewhere to.
Well, I like these ideas. I don't, I don't, hopefully it's enough, hopefully. But I mean, we're getting ready to approve something, and then we'll figure out how we're going to pay for it later. That's kind of how I get this, but I might be wrong on that.
I think it's going to take a while to get these people, if you were fully staffed, that's going to be eight, 10-month period of hiring. During that time, you will have surplus in your budget that will offset 2023.
Yes.
And it's going to be something that we need to address in our budget work.
And if that is indeed what we're going to happen, well, I'm good with it.
And I guess your statement you made, is it enough?
We don't know.
We won't know. I mean, it's, you know, you look, like you said, you look at Ellsworth Correctional Facility, I mean, I don't know, a lot of people is going to take, you know, spend that kind of money to, you know, to have to travel back and forth. But like I said, I think the big question on this is, is it still enough to, you know, to get the people we need and the quality people we need?
All right. I guess I'll ask, is there any public comment? And it looks like you'll have to vacate there just for a second, please.
Norman Mantle, Salina, it's not enough. You can get $4 an hour shift differential on night shift out here at a company. They're paying mileage if you're more than 25 miles away. The shift differential in different correctional facilities, check with Hutcheson, see what their starting wage is. It's way lower, and Governor Calley mandated what their starting wage is going to be. Your hands are tied. It's about money, and we ain't got it. And then you have a responsibility to the taxpayers, so it ain't going to be enough. It's not even close to inflation. If you were to injustice for inflation, you know what wages you'd have to pay us? I can go elsewhere in this state, and I have gone elsewhere than this state. In 1999, I was making $1,875 an hour, right here in Kansas, and it wasn't a bargaining unit, it wasn't a union. In 2008, I was making $24 an hour, just general labor. You're competing against private industry, so it ain't going to be enough. I asked them, I says, I went to a job fair, and I says, what are you paying out here? I says, I know people that have to move here and go to work, and I told them what you got to have. He said, well, we ain't going to pay it. I said, well, you ain't going to get no help. It's about money.
All right. Thank you.
Rosemary Ma, Salina. I agree partly with Norm that the 75 cents differential rate is not enough. I just spoke to a Great Plains employee here a couple weeks ago, and they went up to $2 differential rate at their company because of not being able to get evening work, and most of your other places are paying a dollar, a little bit more than a dollar an hour. So I think we might need to think about raising that differential rate. Thank you.
Can I ask a question of the sheriff?
Just a second.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the commission? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission, and Commissioner Weiss?
Yeah. You bid shifts at the correctional.
That's true, by seniority.
Okay. And it's, how does that, how does that play out usually? Do the newest guys end up on the night shift?
You know, you would say typically, but there are a number of employees, long-term employees, that like night shift work, but the newer employees usually get stuck on nights for a while, just by the, this year. If you're kind of come to work there, you're probably going to be on nights, at least for a little while.
But with the number of people you're looking to hire, if successful, if you get in the door now, you're going to have a lot of seniority in a short period of time, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. Well, I tend to, I tend to agree with Rosemary. We're addressing this, let's, let's do it right, right now, and not have it come back here in six months or something. I would propose going to a dollar an hour shift differential.
As opposed to 75 cents?
Correct.
I'll make that motion in a sec if you want.
Well, I'm, I'm not a HR person. I don't have any HR background. I have to go along with what they're proposing. I totally go along with you recognizing this, the public, I'm good with what you're saying.
The 75 cents that you're proposing, what's the difference? Because that was, that was an additional recommendation. What difference does it make in the 275.50 if you go to the 75 cents an hour differential?
None. None to that, but it looks to me, just pop in my head math, about 20,000 additional in the, that budget impact number two?
From the 60 to 80.
Be 60, it would be 80, at plus and some change.
So a dollar's going to make it 105 then?
Well, an item line number two down at the bottom of the page.
60 plus 20 equals 80. Okay, 80, okay.
Number four, under number four. Yeah, the 60,000, the shift differential would be 80.
And I would say it might be a little bit more than that. This is based on just the standard hours. If there's overtime, somebody stays over a little bit on a shift, there's going to be a little bit more impact, but not a huge amount.
Okay. I agree with the dollar.
It appears that this is going to be a three-part approval then. I mean, number, number three is going to be the issue that we adopt, along with the additional recommendations, which says adding 75 cents an hour, but we're going to add a dollar. And number three is extend the $1,500 hiring incentive.
They're only asking for the first two, right? They're only asking for the first two today.
Okay. I didn't.
The top items up there in that first section, those are what we came to you last week to discuss different possibilities, and then we took direction that the salaries was the focus that we wanted to address first.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question of the administrator. If we, if we decide to put a pay incentive in for night shifts, would that, are there any other departments out there that are working night shifts that this might impact, or they might come and say, you know?
I can't think of any other departments that are regularly assigned to shifts that start after 5:00 PM. There are certainly other departments, I think of Expo for example, where they do have staff that come back to close up events and so forth, but typically, I think most people, their shift starts before 5:00 PM.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a request to implement option number three, effective at the beginning of next pay period, and also approve the request to implement a shift differential of a dollar, effective at the beginning of next pay period.
Second?
It's been moved, and second, we approve item number three, along with the $1 an hour shift differential. Is there any other discussion? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Zero. Motion carries five zero. Thank you for your work on this. Let's hope something happens.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number two.
RFA 2023-52 ARPA update and changes with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is a continuing series in our ARPA updates and changes, that we've been going at this for just about two years now. Every month or two, I come before you and make a recommendation. So today, there are two recommended actions. The first is to amend our existing grant agreement with the Community Housing Development Corporation of Central Kansas to increase that by $95,000 for the purpose of providing that organization with capacity to continue their work. for the purpose of providing that organization with capacity to continue their work and be more efficient. And the second recommendation is to adopt the framework for expenditures for broadband infrastructure in the community. We have been working for quite some time on two issues, broadband and childcare, that have been sort of like hanging out there to come in the future. Still don't have a recommendation on childcare, but do at this point on broadband. So it would essentially shift some of what we had originally planned to just do as grant match for providers in the community into doing some education around broadband as well, and a, and a study for broadband needs. So those are the recommendations today. Would request that the commission approve both of those, but be happy to answer any questions.
Phil, my question, and I keep getting lost with the CHDO, and that is, that's a nonprofit organization. And are they an arm of the city, or any other, they're standalone operation?
Yeah, it's, it's a nonprofit in the community. They have a board. You know, where, where you may be sort of connecting them mentally with the city is the person who was the executive director of that organization for a long time was a former city employee. And so I think people tend to think of him as still being in that city role. But they're, they're a nonprofit in the community. They typically, what their, their purpose, their reason for existence is to improve housing stock in the community. And so typically, how they've done that in the past is to try and purchase some really dilapidated homes, and then go out and raise funds to rehab those and resell them. So sort of a flipping model, if you will, but not flipping for profit, flipping to get, you know, houses typically in North Salina, back on the market in a, in a livable state. They also, in the course of that, developed relationships with contractors, which allowed them to do these weatherization programs. And that's what we've contracted with them for, is to help people stay in their homes by improving energy efficiency and doing some rehab work. But this particular request today would augment that by allowing them to purchase a truck, purchase an insulation blower, and, and do some overhead expenses for the organization.
Maybe this is slightly off the subject a little bit, but I'm just, throw some numbers out there. Say they buy a dilapidated place for $50,000, and they put $25,000 in it to fix it up. So they've got 75,000. Are they trying to sell it then for 100,000 or 125,000? Or are they trying to just level, just break even on it and get somebody in the house? Do you know what their, their plan is in that regard?
Well, that, that part of the, their business model, I can't really speak to, because that's not what we've funded them to do. I, I do know, just as a private individual, when I was looking at homes, I happened to look at one that they had done in, in North Salina, and it was listed at around 110, 108, something like that. But I don't know how much they had in it.
And specifically, we have funded them to do-
Rehab and weatherization for existing owner occupied homes throughout the county, not just in Salina.
So rehab is pretty, pretty broad term. So, okay. Other questions or comments from the commissioners?
How do they generate their funding? Is it all through grants?
You know, I think they do try and turn money from rentals and sales back into the organization as well. But a lot of it is through grant funding. I believe they have relationships with, I think with Dane G. Hanson, and with some other grant funders in the organization, in the, the region, where they have been able to get, get, raise funds to do these kinds of things.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but does the North Central Planning, are they involved in some of the similar projects, or?
They are. So North Central Kansas Planning Commission does a weatherization program, but it has, it's a specific program through, I think, federal funding sources. And it has some pretty tight criteria and a limited amount of funding. So we talked with North Central Planning when we were planning to do this with Chodo to begin with, and they really welcomed this into the market because they're not able to serve all the need in Salina and Saline County.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, and we approve the ARPA update and changes 2023-52.
Second motion.
Been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 2023-52 for the ARPA update and changes. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five, zero. We'll move to item number three.
RFA 2023-50 bid award for 2023 road improvement projects with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Justin. Good morning, commissioners. So on February 27th at 11 o'clock, we opened the bids for 2023 road improvement projects, and we only received one bid. You should have in your packet, the bid tabs, which provides a little more details. So even though we only received one bid, we do believe it was a very competitive bid. So if you look, if you look at the bid tabs, you know, they are significantly lower than my engineer's estimate. You know, and that, my engineer's estimate wasn't put at a level, you know, really way above what I thought the project would come at. I mean, really, I based that estimate off of recent projects, you know, that we either have completed or are currently under construction. And so we felt that, you know, MOM's bid is, is at a very competitive price. So this bid does include two road improvement locations. The first one is Gypsum Valley Road, about 200 feet north of the City of Gypsum Flood Control Dyke. And then the second one is on Kingman Road, from the Gypsum Flood Control Dyke, and then north and east to the bridge over Gypsum Creek. Both of these locations, they do experience significant damage from floods. The road profile is actually designed to be overtopped, and so when that does, it, it completely washes out the road. In 2019, we had several instances where the roads were, were a complete loss. So therefore, what we, what I did is I added these two locations onto our FEMA Section 428 project list. And this, what this program does is FEMA will reimburse the project construction at 75%, and then the Kansas Department of Emergency Management will pick up another 10% for that. A couple of other projects that are on those, on the list, three of them are completed. Those are the realignment projects on Cunningham Road, south of Stimmel, intersection of Stimmel and Jasper, and then Gypsum Valley Road, north of Crawford. And then the fourth one is a project that's currently under construction, and that's the bridge replacement project on Fallen Road, a half a mile east of Burma. So the, the scope of these two projects that I'm talking about here today, what those, what the scope consists of is we're going to regrade the existing roadway to a very specific elevation. Again, like I says, you know, these, these roads are designed to be overtopped, and so it's got to be at a very specific elevation, add base rock, and then asphalt surfacing on top of that. So the asphalt will be there to protect the roadway top. However, as the floodwaters go over the roadway, you know, you've got, you know, you have risk of erosion on the downstream ditch slope and shoulder, and then, you know, could start undermining underneath the asphalt pavement. And so also part of this project, we've got a channel liner that'll go on that downstream slope. And we bid two different alternatives. That's why you see the, the two different alternative bids, and that's just the different materials in the channel liner. And so the channel liner will help protect that erosion and thus protect the asphalt pavement for that. Alternatives for action would be to, one, accept the bids as indicated in staff recommendation, two, accept the bids from a different contractor, which we don't have any, or reject the bid and direct staff to the wishes of the board. Staff recommends accepting new unit prices from the bids submitted by MOM Construction for an estimated work equal to $516,524.06. Those are for both of those locations, and for the alternate two channel liner, which is the, the stronger channel liner. So it's a fully synthetic liner, and so it should, it should last a long time. Funds for this project will be taken out of the 124 account, the special road construction of the one mill, which has a current unencumbered balance of $1,658,185.
A quick question. The FEMA funding, we've, we've applied for that. Have they accepted our application?
They did. It was, it's been a long process, you know. So this is, you know, the application was started in 2019, after all the fun, the flooding we had in there. And I was, we were just approved earlier this year. So it's been a long, long, long process.
Well, I know, back in 19, there was a terrible washout there. Roden Bridge went in, built it back up, and lo and behold, another storm came and, and took that away. So to find a permanent solution for down there, I think is money well spent, especially with FEMA stepping up and helping.
Yes.
Well, I remember several years ago, when Darren presented some things to us regarding FEMA, and he said, we can wait for the FEMA money. He said, this could take three or four years, and it's proven to be the case. So we've just got to be proactive on these items and hope we get the FEMA stuff, and this is one of those. Any other questions? Any comments from the public? Then I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-50 as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 2023-50 for the bid award for 2023 road improvement projects. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five, zero. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number four.
RFA 2023-51 purchase award for crew, crew fuel truck with Darren Fisher, Roden Bridge Administrator.
Morning, Darren.
Good morning, commissioners. I might have to add, live this request for action just a little bit. The 2022 three-quarter ton truck from Midwest Superstore has been sold. They called me last Thursday. It was an inbound vehicle, and someone just purchased it, sight unseen from the internet. It does not, however, affect the staff recommendation at the end. So this request for action is to purchase one new 20, I should say, 2022, 22 one-time regular cab, two-wheel drive fuel truck that was let out for bid according to county's, county policy, 40-32 on November 23rd of 2022. No bids were received. This vehicle was also sent out to bid earlier in 2022, with no bids received then either. A discussion was held with the board of county commissioners on February 28th, 2023, to discuss a, a way to move forward. Several options were presented to the commission, and it is recommended to come back the following week with an RFA for vehicle purchase. We have looked for used trucks in the market, and they are just as expensive as what we can purchase new, and cannot be sourced locally. We have identified one truck at a local dealership that would suit our needs. Long MacArthur Ford has a 2022 one-time truck for $43,650. The alternatives for action would be to authorize the purchase from Long MacArthur Ford, direct staff to, and alternate course of action. Staff recommends purchasing the truck from Long MacArthur Ford. It is a one-truck, one-time truck rather than a three-quarter ton truck, which the department will make better use of it with its ability to pull it, trailer and skid steer. This truck will replace a 2007 Ford F-250 three-quarter ton, two-wheel drive with 100, 100 and 500, 100,500 miles. This vehicle is at the end of its service life. It has two cracked exhaust manifolds, and repair costs will only increase from here. This vehicle will be sold on Purple Wave or a similar auction website. Delivery time is expected within the week. This would take place under county's, the county's purchasing policy 40-1, Section 2, Part D, Number 4, which is exceptions to competitive purchases, which states in practical situations, when competitive purchasing is not practical, based upon timing, performance, or other relevant circumstances, and approved by the county administrator's office. The money to be used will be come from the O2O Special Equipment Count, which has an unencumbered balance of $1,620,747.94. This, the purchase price will leave a balance of $1,577,097.94.
All right, Darren, good work here. I, I don't necessarily agree with that the vehicle, vehicle is at the end of its service life, I think with repairs, that it has some service life left in it for someone. That someone probably isn't Saline County, in my opinion. So it is time to move on, and I'm in favor of it. So other comments from commissioners?
I would like to say it, and it'd probably be a study session type item, but is there any mechanism where the, where the county, we have Expo, others that are looking for vehicles and unable to find them. Is there any mechanism that could be built into our policies which would allow the county to find a wholesale broker that can go to Mannheim or, or the other large auctions and buy a vehicle for us through an auction-type site?
There's not anything currently in the policy. This, I will say, this topic is not unique to Saline County by any stretch of the imagination. There was a whole thread that went around on the listserv in various cities and counties last week, where lots of people are experiencing this particular problem. And I said, if anybody has any policy solutions, I'd love to hear them. And nobody offered any. A couple people have had success, particularly with patrol vehicles in going to outfitters. That's something the sheriff did this year. There are a number of those folks. But everything that's happening in the vehicle market right now seems to be an exception to the policy, not a change that we can reasonably foresee to the policy, so.
It, it just seems to me that there are, there are vehicles out there, but you can see them on, on the website constantly through some of the wholesale auto auctions, and newer used trucks, very new used trucks, and, and, but dealers won't purchase those to put them on their lot to make them available. I mean, if, if we say, well, that fits our need and we would like it, if we could find some way to, to make that purchase, we would be buying wholesale with just the broker getting a little money for handling it and not have to go through the retail and such. I'm just throwing that out.
I'm wondering, I think, I, I heard the commission talk several months ago back, and of course, it has its pros and cons. But, you know, with the county having so many vehicles out there, I mean, you know, between Roden Bridge and all the other departments, we got a lot of vehicles out there. What would it look like if we had a, maybe a fleet management service that we had out there to help us look at the way that our system is set up for, you know, either purchasing, transferring, giving us our recommendations on end of life, whatever it does? You know, in the long run, it, I think it would cut down on where all the department heads and everybody, they have to go out, you know, they spend so much time looking for vehicles, or they spend so much time, you know, researching whatever there is out there. You know, maybe a, a fleet service is something that the county should look into.
That proposal was made to the county just a few months ago with Enterprise wanting to lease us all of our vehicles. And when we took that all apart, we, we figured that was not in, we, being the commission, figured that was not in the best interest of Saline County to do it that way. Conversely, I, I- Conversely, I agree with you. Somewhere along the line, we maybe need to look at how we purchase our vehicles, which coincides with what Jim's saying. But right now, I still think that 12 months from now, 15 months from now, that this is going to come back down to earth with these vehicles. I went and bought one of the local dealers this morning, and I mean, he had pickups everywhere. So, you know, four months ago, he had two pickups on his lot, now he probably had 25 over there. So I think this is a steal, really, for a one-ton truck for $43,000. The manufacturers are producing vehicles that produce the most profit for them. And most of those pickups that are on the lots right now are $60,000 pickups and higher. And for us to find a one-ton right here locally from a local dealer for $43,000, I'd say we need to start talking and release him to go buy the thing. That's, I feel about it.
I probably shouldn't regress to that other item. That would be something we could talk about at a later date. But you're correct, this is on the table, and we need to address it.
Any, any public comment?
Your hands are tied. Norman Mantle, Salina, you've still got a responsibility to the taxpayers. Until you change your policy, you can't do anything. You need to talk to Topeka. They're the ones putting these laws and regulations and policies in place. Your hands are tied.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-51 as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-51. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Run, don't walk, Long MacArthur. Item number five.
RFA 2023-48, training agreements for Philip Chalmers Trainings and J. Chad Professional Training LLC with Michelle Callum, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning, and welcome, Michelle.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am coming before you this morning to have, with a request for action, for some training that I have looked into and I would like to bring into our agency. Kansas Department of Corrections requires my staff to obtain 20 to 40 hours of training every year. As you can imagine, it's expensive to send people to different states or even to different towns and do it overnight. So I have looked into a couple of nationally-known training presenters that are willing to come here and put on a training for us, and it would be an all-day training. So it's very cost-effective for us. You will see that there are proposals from both Philip Chalmers Training and also J. Chad Professional Training, which is a man by the name of Officer Galloway, who is known as Tall Cop. These are trainings, like I said, that are known nationally, and we have heard from people who have seen these people present, and they're very popular. You will see that Phil Chalmers Training is a $4,000 cost, and J. Chad Professionals is 7,200 for the one-day training. That seems like a lot of money, but I have reserved, pending your approval, the small auditorium at the Kansas Highway Patrol. They are willing to allow us to use that building for free, and it holds 80 people. So I have reached out to local agencies, the Sheriff's Department, Police Department, Court Services, Municipal Court, and everyone wants in on this. So while I would be sending 20 people to training, we still have 60 seats available, so we have other people that are willing to go in and help us with that cost. So it's very cost-effective. The Chalmers Training is actually $60 per person, and the Tall Cop Training comes out to be $100 per person, and that includes lunch, because we can eat at KHP for $10. So it's a nice facility, it's very easy for us to get to. I have, like I said, a number of people, so far we have 30 of those seats filled, and I haven't gone outside of these local agencies to see if other community corrections or court services are interested. So the alternatives for action are that you approve by signature the agreements for the training or deny the request. Staff recommendation would be approval of the agreements for training. I would also add that those contracts have been reviewed and approved by Mike Montoya if you choose for us to go forward with this. The budget impact is that the training will be paid by grant dollars that we have and by other agencies that will assist with a portion of the cost, based on however many seats that they would like. I will also tell you that I have offered the Highway Patrol five seats at no charge, because they're letting us use their facility for no charge, so. I have both of those agreements with me. I believe that you also have a copy of those, so.
Michelle, the cost per person, and let's just say it's the city of Salina for the police department, and they want 10 seats. Do they have to pay you back?
Yes. We have to, we will write from our grant funds, or the county will issue a check directly to these two entities, and then we will be reimbursed by Salina Police Department. I believe that they want at least 10, Court Services wants 10, the Sheriff's Department, I think, wants five, so, yeah, it would run through our accounting system.
Well, it sounds like a good deal to me. I mean, particularly being grant dollars or what's involved here. As far as filling the seats, I don't know, my recommendation would be that some point down the line that you set a deadline for the local agencies to say, "I'm in or I'm out," and after that, open it up to, you know, surrounding counties or police departments or task force or whatever that want to be involved in that. I don't know if we need to offer it to our inner agencies that maybe aren't law-related or drug-related. I don't know if that's what this is all about or not, but.
The trainings, I can tell you briefly. Phil Chalmers gives a training that is kind of about identifying dangerous people, identifying, you know, behaviors in dangerous people. The Tall Cop, which is the J. Chad Professionals, he does a kind of drug trends. So he comes into your community the day before and goes to various local places that may sell some less-than-desirable substances, and kind of gets a feel for what are the trends and what kinds of drugs are coming. As we all know, things kind of move across the country. So he has, he presents nationally, so he's very much on the forefront of what kind of drug trends there are with fentanyl use and heroin use and that kind of stuff. So those are the kinds of trainings. I'm not opposed to opening it to other people. I have no doubt that we will have the 80 seats filled within two hours of putting it out to other agencies, community corrections, or whoever. They're very, these are very popular trainings, and people have traveled to see them before.
Another thought, just quickly, would be, you know, perhaps Ashby House or an agency like that, the local homeless people that, I don't know if this relates to them, I assume that it would, so.
Yeah, I can reach out to them.
Any other questions or comments from Commissioners? Any public comment? I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-48 as presented.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-48. Are there any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you for the presentation, Michelle.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number six.
RFA 2023-49, 360 Document Solutions Lease and Service Agreements with Michelle Callum, Community Corrections Director.
And the floor is yours again.
Thank you. Good morning again, Commissioners. We have a request before you this morning. We are looking at purchasing two new printer copiers from 360 Document Solutions. We have an option to either lease the printers or purchase them. Sherry and I kind of went back and forth about how to set that table up to give you the most easy-to-read way of looking at that information, and it's just kind of difficult and confusing, so. We did reach out to ImageQuest, who is who we have our, who we've worked with in the past with our copiers, but we did not receive a response or a bid from them. The only response that we received was from 360 Document Solutions. We did also talk to Court Services and the District Court, and they already have an agreement in place with 360 Document Solutions, and they've been satisfied with their service. You will hear here and also in my update that we have received some extra funds from the Kansas Department of Corrections, which is part of why we are choosing to go forward and look at new copiers. We have a short timeframe to spend that money. So that would also weigh into why we would prefer to purchase new machines rather than pre-owned machines because of the long service time that we would have with them. You will see in the chart that we have laid out what it would cost for our agency to lease a new printer, what it would cost to lease a pre-owned printer, what it would cost to purchase a new printer, and what it would cost to purchase a pre-owned printer. Our preference as an agency would be to purchase the contract and service agreement for two new Kyocera 404i printers. The alternatives would be to either approve that purchase or to approve an alternative lease or purchase option or to deny the request. Our staff recommendations are that we approve the purchase contract and service agreement for two new Kyocera 404i printers. The budget impact, the expense would be covered by the agency with KDOC grant funding. If you have any questions?
Two quick observations. Number one, here we go again, purchasing copiers for the second request in less than a month for copiers. We need to somehow or another get a handle on that. Number two, this is covered by the KDOC grant funding, and that's good. Other comments?
Question, Michelle. If you would happen to purchase a certified previously-owned, their service agreement would take care of any repairs, all parts, all labor, all of that?
Yes.
And so it looks like savings of around $5,000. If you would go that route, could you use that $5,000 in some other area?
So the difference is, as you will see in my update, we are receiving unexpended funds from KDOC in the amount of $59,000. We have until June 30th to spend $59,000. That is unexpended funds from FY22, from KDOC FY22. The reason that it makes more sense to us for our office to purchase that is because we have the money now. If we get locked into a five-year service agreement, I don't know what my funding will be in the future. I know how much money I have today. So for us, it makes sense to purchase that amount and pay out that money now and have a smaller service agreement over the course of 63 months than to have that larger service agreement. I understand where you're coming from, and it's really more about timing. We didn't know until January, that I believe it was January, that we were receiving this $59,000 unexpended funds.
I see what you're saying as far as leasing versus purchasing, but if you would purchase a used one?
Oh, if we were to purchase a used one, I see what you're saying, yes. And the lease agreement would be, yes, I'm not opposed to that. I think that we kind of looked at it that we have this money that we need to spend, and we've given back money before, and this kind of thing doesn't happen very often. The last time it happened was 11 years ago. So we kind of looked at it that, why take on something that's been used by somebody else and refurbished when maybe we just would start over fresh? Because the service agreement, the monthly service agreement would be the same.
And have you earmarked the remaining, it might be part of your report, but have you earmarked what to do with that remaining funds?
We have, we have started spending some of it. We purchased new chairs for our conference room. Our chairs were very old. We have purchased new office chairs. I was using an office chair from, that we had purchased in 2005, so we have, we have started purchasing that, and we are looking at a new door. We have an issue with our front door, different things like that. So we do have some stuff earmarked. The trainings that I brought to you today would be part of that, unexpended funds that we would be able to spend.
Well, the only thing I'm seeing that you're gaining would possibly be the value of the item that trade-in or whatever. But if that 5,000 could be used somewhere else, they're going to keep this machine up and running and serviced for you for the same amount of time, for the same amount of dollars. But if you don't have anywhere that you could use that 5,000, then...
This is a, this is a wonderful quandary to have, to have $59,000 to spend, although we do have to abide by KDOC regulations, and they do dictate how we are able to spend that money. But we do have a short amount of time to spend it in, so I don't know that we have any place else that we're really hurting for funds.
Well, the most important thing that you hit on for me right there was, you know, a few months from now, we have no idea what the next legislative session's going to bring or if they're going to cut your funding altogether. Grab it while it's there, I guess, is the way to look at it for me. So any further comments from Commissioners or questions? Once again, I'll ask for any public comment. Seeing then, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the 360 Document Solutions Lease and Service Agreement for RFA 2023-49.
Second motion.
That's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-49, and I assume that that it means that the new one you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes four to one, with Commissioner Weiss dissenting. We, thank you, Michelle. We'll move to informational items.
Committee Corrections Department update for March 2023, Michelle Callum, Community Corrections Director.
Hello.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am here to present my semi-annual department update. This time period will be from October of 2022 through March of 20, or until March of 2023. We have brought on two new staff members to our agency, Becca Cooper and Lee Tremblay. Becca works with our adult clients, and Lee has taken over kind of a hybrid position that we created, where he deals mostly with adult clients, but he does have a few juvenile clients, because he is an officer that we also send to Ottawa County. Ottawa County gives us funds as well, so we have officers that go there and serve that community as well. So having one person that can do adults and juveniles in both places is kind of a plus for us. Over the last six months, our agency hosted a Drug Court Roundtable discussion in the fall, which brought together about 75 people from agencies across the state. They came in to exchange ideas on effective drug court practices. That is another reason why I have no doubt that we can fill those 80 seats for those trainings, because we did have 75 people that came just for that. And it would be that same type of audience that we would be looking at for those trainings. Our agency has received the award money through the Burn Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, we call it the JAG Grant, of $23,375. We are currently using that to pay for our up-trust messaging system, and it will continue to pay for that through our, through that fiscal year '23. The five supervisory staff in my agency completed the Professional Leadership Academy. It was a 12-week online course to enhance leadership qualities. That was offered to us at a really opportune time. I had just taken over as director, so it kind of guided the supervisory staff in how to kind of make that transition a little bit easier. Change is hard, no matter what the situation is, so it kind of helped us ease into that change a little bit. Beginning in January, we started offering an in-house weekly Spanish class for staff members that was taught by a local teacher in the community. Staff participated for one hour a week, and then they had homework, and they also had an app that they could download on their phones if they choose. We are doing that because we do have a population in our agency of mostly parents, who are parents of our juveniles, who English is not their first language. So it's hard when you're telling a 14-year-old what the parameters of their probation is, and then you're expecting that 14-year-old to tell their parent what the parameters are. So we started that as a way of maybe being able to mitigate some incorrect information, so. Unfortunately, our, the teacher who has been coming notified us this last week that she wouldn't be able to continue that program with us because she's working on her masters and she doesn't have time. So we're looking at some other options and reaching out to some other people to see if we can find a replacement for that. As I alluded to earlier, in January of 2023, we were notified that Kansas Department of Corrections would be returning a portion of the unexpended funds from FY22 to agencies who were currently in compliance with reporting to KDOC. We were later advised that we would receive a total of $59,075.89, and that it would need to be used by June 30th of 2023. As I said, the last time that happened was fiscal year 2011. I had Sherry pull that information up. This doesn't happen very often. And it is a percentage based on unexpended funds. I'm not sure how they arrived at that amount. I expected it to be much less. I took a guess that maybe we would get $15,000. So we're very fortunate to get this money, and we can use it to make some upgrades and enhancements within our agency. Currently, we have 386 clients in our Adult and Supervision Division. We have 106 clients in our Drug Court program. We have an additional 136 clients in our pretrial program. And we have 86 clients in the various programs that make up our juvenile division. We also have assisted 120 clients through juvenile intake and assessment in the last six months. Our agency offers a variety of in-house cognitive programs for adult and juvenile clients, and we are continuing to do that. And we also refer to the local agencies for mental health and drug and alcohol services. Our future plans, we have been working on an ongoing project to incorporate a therapy dog into our agency. We're very excited about this. The dog is being provided by Cares Incorporated in Concordia. We looked at several programs across the country, and we chose to go with something a little more local. The supervisor, other supervisors and I have been to their facility and toured their facility to get a better feel for what their program is about. And we are hoping to be matched with our therapy dog in June of this year. We have a staff member who will be the main handler, and then we have a backup handler. And we have been told that during the training process, we can come, other people can come. So I see myself as probably going for part of that time so that I can provide respite care should our trainer go on vacation or do something like that. And I would need to keep the therapy dog at my house. So staff is working to coordinate training with other local partners, the Salina Police Department, the Sheriff's Office Court Services. And we have those tentative dates set. We were waiting for your approval to carry out those contracts. So sharing the costs with those other agencies will allow us to bring in quality trainers at a very affordable cost. We have site visits scheduled with Johnson County Veterans Court and Wyandotte County Veterans Court. Staff will attend these visits with other local court personnel. We went to Johnson County last week. My Drug Court Coordinator, pretrial coordinator, and myself, and the administrative supervisor, Sherry. We went with Judge Johnson and Christina Trocheck, who is the prosecutor from the city of Salina, to get a feel for Veterans Court. Tomorrow, we are all traveling to Wyandotte County to look at their process. And we want to be a part of this to help our veterans in the community. We do have a number of people who come through our agency that have veteran status. So I'm very much on board. I don't know what our part can be. It will be based on how we can incorporate that into the funding that we receive from KDOC. But I'm excited to see where this leads. We will also be starting on work with our Kansas Department of Corrections Comprehensive Plan, which is due on May 1st. Our budget update, the agency has received our funding allocations from the Kansas Department of Corrections for FY24. We've been notified that we will be flat funded for the coming year. Therefore, other funding sources from local grants, from Salina Ottawa County contributions, and the JAG grant are vital to maintain our day-to-day operations and continue to assist the population that we're tasked to serve. Do you have any questions?
Michelle, in your report here, you've got 136 clients in our pretrial program.
Yes.
Do you have a way of knowing or even a guesstimate? If we didn't have this pretrial program, how many of that 136 would still be incarcerated right now? Do you have a way of determining that or guessing?
I don't have a concrete number, but a good portion, I would say. I mean, obviously, people are granted bonds, but you know, there's a bond schedule and that kind of stuff. So it's hard to say. But I can get you a better number, and I can email it to all of you, or I could present that at a later date if you wanted concrete numbers. But we do have people who, I would say, yes, are considered to be significant risk, and they would still be in jail. But they are reporting to us. They are coming in and submitting UAs. And we also offer, you know, them referrals to mental health agencies or drug and alcohol agencies if they want to go. You know, it's not something that we necessarily mandate, but if they're willing to look at those types of issues in their life, it's something that we can provide.
Do you think that number would be greater than 50%? Would still be? Okay, that tells me nothing.
I do believe that it would be, I would guess, more like 60 or 70%.
Other comments from, questions from commissioners? All right, well, thank you for the detailed report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Let's see. We will move to item number two.
Roden Bridge Bimonthly Update for January and February 2023 with Darren Fisher, Roden Bridge Administrator.
Darren, you're back from Lon MacArthur already. All right.
You know, I can tell you, my service manager is probably already on the phone with them. This is our bimonthly update for the month of January and February. Next slide, please. I gave a presentation to the Federal Highway Association Everyday Count Summit for Saline County System of Primary Rural Routes. It has garnered some state and national attention for those. We responded to three snow and ice events. We did complete 2022 with no lost time accidents. This makes six years without a lost time accidents. And I'd like to take the time to commend the employees for their way of thinking, their way of working that puts safety, makes it the priority. Also, you know, that includes everyone, even the commission. When I come to purchase equipment, you know, the things that are going to make their jobs safer. So appreciate everybody's effort there. We did some trash pickups countywide. Next slide, please. We did receive the new haul and tractor purchase that was the commission awarded with the 25% match grant from KDHE using their DIRI program, which is the Diesel Emissions Reduction Act. Next slide, please. Which also requires us to dismantle the old piece of equipment so it can't be sold or used again. Next slide, please. And we have more than one sadistic operator that was willing to do that. Next slide, please. This is the brush cutter that the commission approved the purchase of. Next slide, please. So it makes pretty quick work and chip of a tree, which means, and safety-wise, nobody had to get a chainsaw, go cut that tree down, and then run it through the chipper. Next slide, please.
Those are nasty trees.
Next slide. So this is a little piece along Country Club Road. It's usually what our maintenance takes care of. And with that machine, next slide, please. They were able to complete that in about two hours. Now typically, that would have been four men and chainsaw and chippers and all day, if not more, project or a pile of brush somewhere that we would have had to come back and burn later. So it kind of goes in along with trying to get us out of the burning fire business.
Just a quick one. Does that mulch it all at the same time? And you'll just leave it there?
Yes, we'll leave it there, and then hopefully the new grass will grow up between it and the spring, and then it'll just be part of the landscape. And this is just, next slide, please. This is just a picture of every area within the county that we have been doing some tree trimming activities with our crews. I had a few pictures of those. Next slide, please. This just shows some hedgerows sticking out into the roadway. And then after the mulchers from the excavators completes their project. Next slide, please. This is an intersection. And then shows the improvement of the line of sight for the intersection with the mulchers. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. We did replace one culvert on Hedberg Road east of Burma. It was part of the unofficial detour for the Fallen Project. And because of the extra traffic, we did have one culvert failure. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is an erosion control project on Cunningham Roads. Somebody had stuffed the bale down in there to try and keep the water from eroding their field because it wasn't going where it was supposed to, which impacted the road. The culvert would fill up, and then it would come over the road. So we removed the bale and went in and dug the ditch out. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. We repaired one small structure on Shipton Road east of Headville. A piece of the plate came up on the bridge deck. Or it's a culvert, a box culvert. Next slide, please. Went in there, replaced that bridge decking. Next slide, please. And then just covered it with cold mixed asphalt. Next slide, please. This shows where all the roads that our rural operators had worked on during the last two months. We also repaired or replaced 226 signs and posts, and the yearly sign inventory is complete. This is a typo. We did not haul 28,000 ton of rock. It was 8,450 ton of rock, 7,328 ton of AB3, 2,030 ton of sand, and 285 ton of salt for the snow and ice events. Our plans, we have, we're working on this year's construction projects. I'm talking with Ted this morning. He's got about 35 culverts on the books, ready to replace. We have three half tankers, one mile of Simpson Road to rebuild. And we're going to plan on doing some edge wedge in the western part of the county this spring. And then we're going to continue with the vegetation control and responding to winter weather. And the budget line items are pretty much within normal parameters.
Great. Darren, several years ago, the commissions prior to this put a plan in place for bridge replacement. What has happened to that? I don't?
You know, that was, that's still part of our plan. Justin Mater revises that plan, I believe, on a yearly basis. And it's pretty much on track.
Okay, I just haven't identified it with his plans to that program.
Right, right. And we do, we have a, I believe it's a five-year program. KDOC requires every county to have a five-year bridge replacement program, and it's tied into their funding for their off-system bridge money we receive and things like that. So we still do have one.
Questions or comments from commissioners?
I just want to say congratulations on that six years without a no lost time accident. I mean, that's fantastic when we are, people can go home at night and we don't have to worry about that. That's six years, and just keep it going.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, you and your department.
I'll mention, I was amazed to see what that Skidsteer chipper could do in such a short period of time. It has to be a savings to the county in staff hours.
Absolutely.
And the safety of cleaning all of that out. So looking back, I think we can pat ourselves on the back for money well spent there.
Thank you for approving it. It doesn't sit very long.
All right, thanks again. Item number three.
Financial projection 2024 to 2028 with Philip Smith, Haynes County Administrator.
Morning, Phil.
Good morning again, commissioners. So I'm going to share my screen here. Before the commission today is a financial projection that we use to start talking about the budget for 2024. And I've modeled projections for each of the seven county funds that have a mill levy. And we can go through and take a look at how we're faring. I will say, if you look toward the right of any of these spreadsheets, those numbers get scary. But the point of the projection is not to think that we're going to have massive deficits out into the future. The point is to emphasize that we have choices to make to avoid those scary numbers out into the future, both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. Probably much more interesting than the numbers themselves are the assumptions that go into each of the numbers. So for purposes of the model, I've assumed that we will not be raising property tax over the next five years. That may or may not turn out to be the case. I've also modeled in a slight recession at the end of this year and beginning of 2024, and then an economic rebound. I've done that because that seems to be sort of the consensus of what economists are saying. But of course, economists aren't any better at predicting the future than any of the rest of us. And so that may or may not turn out to be the case. So whatever numbers you see here are unlikely to be the numbers that we actually achieve going into the future, but they are a way to start thinking about what will happen to us if we don't make adjustments either on the revenue side or the expenditure side. So the first thing that I will say in looking at all of the spreadsheets is that Saline County is doing quite well. If you look at the projections for where we will start 2024, those all have a positive balance at the beginning of next year. So that's a good place to start from. We're not in a position where we need to be discussing cuts. We're in a position of discussing where we invest and how much we invest, given the revenue picture. So I could just go through some of these sheets for you and kind of talk about where we are and why we might be where we are. So in each of the sheets, the first column of numbers is the adopted budget for the current year. We adopt a budget with a beginning balance based on what we know at the time, typically in July. And in, under Kansas law, we budget to zero. So you see the ending fund balance in the 2023 adopted budget column is very close to zero for each of the funds. The reality is, of course, that we hope not to do that. So if you look at the next column in each of the spreadsheets, it's estimated actuals for this year. And the first thing you will notice is that the beginning fund balances tend to be higher than what we anticipated at the time of budget adoption. So in the case of the general fund, for example, we think, we thought we were going to come into this year with about $5.5 million. The reality is that we're over $8 million at the current time, but the commission authorized transfers to capital, which the auditor has not made yet. So I anticipate about $1.2 million in transfers, bringing that beginning fund balance down to around $7 million as a starting point rather than $5.5. The property taxes have not changed from budget. They're typically very stable. Sales taxes, however, we did for this year anticipate $4.75 million. The reality is that we have exceeded that number for several years running. Last year, we actually ended up the year at about $5.8 million in sales tax. Again, this particular spreadsheet, I'm assuming that we're going to have an economic downturn toward the end of this year and the beginning of next year. So I'm not assuming we're going to have $5.8 million, but I do assume that it will be over $4.75. I've used $5.3 for this model with a 2% drop for next year, and then it starts to rebound, starting in 2025. As I said, that may or may not turn out to be the case, but that's a good place to start a conversation. Motor vehicle taxes, I'm estimating that we will collect about 96.5% of what we have budgeted. Officer fees, the largest amount of money that we drive in officer fees is for recordings in the Register of Deeds office. So again, assuming that sort of goes down a little bit this year into next year. So again, assuming that sort of goes down a little bit this year into next year and then starts to come back up. Shared jail expense is the revenue that we get from the city of Salina for housing city prisoners. I've not made any assumptions about how that's going to change going forward. With moving to the new facility at the end of this year, we will need to renegotiate that agreement. So I didn't even want to hazard a guess as to how that might change. Interest on idle funds, as the treasurer has reported to you, we are doing much better in that area than we have in recent years. It's been a downward trend for a number of years and is finally, we think, bottomed out and starting to come back up. So I'm anticipating that we'll actually make more than budget for this year and that we see growth for a couple of years and then we start to see a decline again. Senior services, you know, I, they're, they've been hovering right around that 400,000 in revenue number for a couple of years. So assuming a slight growth going forward on them. And then we have sort of all other revenues, a whole series of just various and sundry things that we bring in amounts to about $900,000 a year, small growth assumption built in there. On the expenditure side, the big dog, so to speak, in the general fund is always for salaries. So the assumption here is that salaries will increase at the average rate of change over the last five years leading up to 2020, which happened to be 2.9%. That's everything. That takes into account new positions, step increases and annual cost of living adjustments. This for 2024 additionally assumes, in addition to that 2.9%, also adding in 15 new correctional officers. Those are the only positions I'm modeling in at this time. I do know that other departments intend to ask for additional positions. Whether or not they, those get funded, obviously is a choice for the commissioners to make. Is 2.9% the right number? Maybe not. That's just a historical average. But if you were to go to say, for grins, 6%, you can see how that changes the numbers going forward. You would have to, at that point, probably look at an increase on the revenue side to accommodate that kind of growth for, for salary expense. For contractual and commodities, I've taken the average change in the consumer price index, which is up to 3.6%. And then for capital outlay appropriations and other charges, have not assumed any increases in those. So you can see that based on the base assumptions, we would significantly eat into our beginning balance in 2024. So, you know, the, the implication there is that we will need to adjust these numbers somewhat as we go through the budget process, either on the revenue side or the expenditure side or most likely both cases. So there's a similar scenario for each of the other funds. For road and bridge, you know, one of the assumptions that is built in is highway users tax. We've done, we've exceeded budget projections the last couple of years there, but motor vehicle fuel sales are down again. And so we keep anticipating the other shoe to drop there and, and for that revenue to start decreasing. The salary changes, this is slightly lower percentage based on historicals just because we haven't added as many positions in road and bridge as we have in the general fund over time. Contractuals, again, at that 3.6% increase. But I've modeled commodities at a 7.4% increase. And that's based on the average increase in the National Highway Construction Cost Index because most of the things that road and bridge actually has to purchase as a commodity are based on petrochemical or a rock or something that tends to inflate higher than the base rate of inflation for consumer goods. For capital outlay, the road and bridge department has a very robust equipment replacement plan. So I have used their projected numbers each year plus an additional $200,000 for gravel road safety upgrades. And then for cost of construction inflated again at that 7.4% based on the highway cost index. You can see that we start out pretty well in 24 in terms of a beginning fund balance for road and bridge. But we quickly become negative in road and bridge by the end of the year because of some of those cost inflators. So again, either need to adjust things on the revenue side or won't be able to fund as much on the expenditure side for road and bridge. As same as sort of story for noxious weed. Noxious weed has fewer revenue sources than many other funds. Their, a big one being the sale of chemicals. Assuming a decrease there, again, based on recessionary pressures, but assuming an increase in the cost. And if anybody has a great way of projecting oil price increases, let me know. So I just use the, the CPI change for that one. Then we get into employee benefits fund. Employee benefits fund is funded pretty much exclusively by the mill levy and the associated motor vehicle taxes derived from the mill levy, small amount of other reimbursement revenue. This fund, funds are health insurance, social security, pension benefits, workers' comp, and then just a few other employee benefits. And so health insurance, I have assumed this based on an average growth projection from the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. The good news for this, at least for 2024, is HR Director Marilyn Lemer and I had a call with our health plan consultants last week. And last year at this time, when we had that call, we got a really big shocker. They were projecting a 24% increase in health insurance costs from '22 to '23 if we had not made changes. We did make changes to our health insurance plan that started in October of last year. And as a result, those changes have been very positive. Right now, they are starting with a 3.7% increase for next year. So even better than what I have modeled here by a couple percentage points. Social Security and CAPers are just modeled based on increases to the employee wages. So as those change, we will need to change the assumptions there as well. Health Department is a similar story. They derive a lot more of their funding from grants and reimbursements and user fees. I, I expect that their grants and reimbursements, I've modeled it at zero. That's probably a little bit optimistic. I expect that they will actually start having some of their COVID-related grants dry up. But the thing about the Health Department is it seems like there's always a new crisis. Whenever you see one series of grants end, at least historically, you've seen a, a new series of grants that they've been able to, to obtain. And so they've been overall pretty flat for many, many years. No big mysteries on the expenditure side there. And then the last two funds, of course, are special road construction, the one mill fund and special bridge construction, the two mill fund. Those funds, you know, the, the revenues sort of are what they are. It's really on the expenditure side where, you know, you can do cost control. The thing about the special road construction fund, this is modeled based on the county engineer's road upgrade project list. And there are a number of big, big projects that are out there in future years on that list. So those are the kinds of things that when we go out to road and bridge for the study session on the 28th of this month, we'll want commissioners to have some really serious conversations about because, you know, that's not a number that we can reasonably achieve as we go out into 2028. So what, what projects do you want to prioritize? On the bridge side, it's, we're not significantly adding bridges. So it's basically the cost of replacement and which I think inflated by that highway construction cost index. So again, as I said, overall, I think it paints a pretty positive picture for 2024, but also indicates where we have choices that we're going to need to make to maintain a financially healthy organization. I'd be happy to fiddle with any numbers at commissioner requests or answer any questions for you.
Can we start implementing some of our thoughts from the building study session that we had a couple weeks ago? Where do those get plugged in? Into the general fund or to just, if it was Health Department, it'd be under their fund or?
So that's a really excellent question, Commissioner Shadwick. Typically, what we have done is we make annual transfers at the end of the year to, from these funds, particularly the general fund and road and bridge to the cap, the county CIP and from the Health Department to the Health Department CIP. And so we would pay for those project costs. To the extent that we pay cash for them, they would be paid out of that CIP fund. To the extent that we would have to bond for them, those bond payments would end up back in either the general fund or the Health Department fund. And so that is something that's not modeled into this because we haven't talked about exactly how much we want to bond yet. But that is something to keep in mind that going forward, that would be another thing that we would have to add to this projection.
Well, it's a lot to digest here right now. I'm not prepared to have any reasonable or sensible question to ask, but I, I, this is, this, it's pretty amazing that we're going out as much as five years here and with these projections. And it, but it, but it does give us a sense of what do we expect or, you know, close to it. So I'm, thank you, is what I can say at this point. And let the fun begin here in another, what, two or three weeks when we really start talking?
Next Tuesday, actually. I'll be asking you first.
Forget the two or three weeks, then how about next week?
Yeah.
One comment I have, a lot depends on our state legislators and what happens there. They could really rock our world when it comes to putting a budget together with a couple of the bills that they've proposed.
Absolutely. Thank, thank you for that comment, Commissioner. One of the things that is currently in discussion, and we've talked about this previously, is a bill that would exempt food sales from not only the state portion of the sales tax, but the local portion of the sales tax. And we don't have a great indicator of, of what that impact would be, but it would definitely be negative. So if we looked at sales tax and let's just say it's, it's 20%, I mean, you know, that, that changes that, that picture considerably.
And more so is exemption on property taxes that could really, really hit us hard and, and it would fall back on, on the taxpayers left, the homeowners, to make up all that difference.
Yes, if they exempted certain classes of, or exempted certain businesses from paying property taxes. It's called the Government Competition Bill. The proposal is to not have certain businesses pay property taxes if they are quote unquote competing against a, a government entity. An example of that would be the fact that we serve lunch at the senior center. And so a restaurant in town could potentially claim that they're competing against the government in that instance and be exempt from paying property tax. And that would significantly impact property taxes.
Sales tax portion, Saline County's portion of the sales tax, I think Saline, what is Salina, 9.5%? Nine and three quarter, no, I'm not talking about the downtown because I know there's another, another, what, 1% on that. But of that 9% or 9.5%, the county actually only gets, what, 1%?
1% for the general fund and then that half percent, of course, for the jail.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. In the city commission meeting last night, I was, you know, they were making proposals, or not proposals, but estimates of how much, if, if this food tax bill goes through, how much they were going to lose. And then they also made a projection on how much it would cost the county. And to me, based on what their percentage is of the sales tax and what ours is, their percentage, their, their estimate was way off for the county, I thought, based on what they thought their, I mean, they were like $8 million and they thought that the county would be more like $2 million, a million and a half. I think something like that would cost us. I, I don't know that that number is way off, but.
It's probably not way off. You know, the reality of it is, I think we don't know exactly what we're talking about. We're, as, as I've said, I can tell you how much Walmart and Dylan's pay, but what I can't tell you is how much of that is food versus clothing, flowers, all the other things that, that they sell. And so, you know, I think it's, you know, we're, we're trying to sort of come up with a number that we don't have a great way to model. But the, the county's sales tax, so it's not that we get 1% of all taxable sales in the county. It's that 1% of all taxable sales is the countywide sales tax, which then gets split between the county and all the incorporated cities based upon a ratio of population and mill levy or assessed value. And so the county ends up getting. And so um the county ends up getting sort of roughly a third of that one percent. Um, so the city benefits um tremendous, the city of Salina, a- all the cities, but particularly the city of Salina, uh benefits from that one percent countywide sales tax as well uh as their sales tax that they only collect within city limits.
You lost me.
Yeah, well, uh, thank you, state legislature, right?
I- it is amazing. I mean, uh, the the differences between the city and the county, they have a lot of ways to uh derive income. They have lots of sources that they can go out and say, we're gonna raise the water rate, we're gonna raise the sewer rate, we're gonna raise, you know, whatever. Uh, lots of recreation rate, whatever. We have, what is it, two s- two sources of income? I mean, property taxes and sales tax.
Well, I mean, you can see what we've got uh sort of up here. I mean, uh, motor vehicle taxes, we can't really impact, except to the extent that we impact the the mill levy. Um, officer fees are really, we don't get to adjust those. Those are mostly set by by statute and um depending upon the volume of people who come in and ne- and need services. Um, the the jail expense, we can monkey with to a certain extent, but you know, that's a an agreement, so you have to have two parties to come to an agreement. Uh, interest on idle funds, we really don't control. It's really a function of the interest rate. So the Federal Reserve has much more uh impact on that than the Board of County Commissioners. So yeah, I mean, it's it's very much um really, really property tax, where you all have a lever that you can that you can pull.
Well, I'm glad you brought it up, Jim, about what the uh how the impact uh uh from Topeka can impact us. I'm saying that tongue in cheek a little bit because it is a scary notion of what may or may not happen there. All right, any other questions? If not, we're gonna move to uh item number five.
Commissioner's comments?
I would like to say that uh I I accepted the invitation from uh the South High School uh English Department to participate and observe their um uh special project that they had going last week with uh several students. There's several classes uh regarding uh repurpose and reuse of our jail. Uh, i- it was pretty enlightening to see what's on young people's minds. You know, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-old uh individuals that uh and they were pretty well in line with what our our survey uh come out with. They were concerned about the juvenile jail and and they were concerned about homelessness and uh things al- along those natures, which is the bulk of what our replies were. Uh, they wanna see that jail repurposed for those reasons. What they didn't have information about was how much was those things gonna cost? I they admitted that once they heard some of the cost proposals, that uh they probably would have uh said some different things or come up with different proposals. But the 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 bottom line is, it was an enlightening and and a really a nice situation that I was involved in with those kids. I really uh, it was time well spent and hopefully we can do some things like that again. So thank you to the Salina South High School English teachers for for inviting me. So other comments or commissioners? Are there any announcements?
I will be gone next week. Uh, I will attend the meeting by Zoom. I will be out of the, I'll be in Florida, so I will attend the uh commission meeting on Zoom next week.
Your Florida trip is for NACO or s- or county, but no, okay.
No, sir.
All right, uh, motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded the adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, we're adjourned. Thank you.